Okay, so I'm Diara, CCIE by 30. And I am working on the C-CMP Enterprise Core Exam. And I really started this group because I personally was having some struggles just keeping up with my studies. I'm not even honestly out of the first exam topic. So I definitely want to get this done by the end of the summer so I can move on to the next exam. So my goal for this group is for us to be able to hold each other accountable, collaborate on topics that are like might be a little bit more difficult for others. Example for me, I'm not a wireless person. Know some basic concepts of getting it connected to a switch, but nothing really beyond that. And of course SD-WAN and all of those newer topics. So the group is going to run for 10 weeks. I know everyone is at a different point in their study journey. So feel free to use this time to review a topic. If you have a topic you want to go over that you're struggling with, or just something that maybe you took a practice exam and you didn't do as well in an area, we can definitely take some time to focus on that. But yeah, it's just meant to be a companion to your personal studies, to give you a place to ask questions with other people. And go from there and celebrate each other's successes. So how does that sound for everyone?
Sounds good to me.
So let's just go around, introduce yourself, let everyone know where you are and a topic you would like to cover. And we'll build a schedule and go from there. Who wants to go first?
Well, I'll go first. I'm at the top. I'm Edward Rothwell. And I'm here out of West Virginia. I have my CCNA already and I wanted to get the C-CMP Encore by the end of the summer. I took the switch last year, didn't pass it. But it was a lesson learned and I was just going to use that and apply it to the Encore here. At least those parts, anyway.
Awesome. Chris?
I can go. So like a little bit redundant, but my name is Chris. I'm currently in Bakersfield, California, Southern California. I have not started the C-CMP Encore exam topics at all. This is just something that I've wanted to do. But I'm sure everybody understands that sometimes work gets in the way. And it gets busy sometimes. And I was considering starting the Encore, studying for it at the beginning of this month. But right now, we're working on an SD-WAN project with Palo Alto. So we're kind of shifting away from the Cisco world to Palo Alto. But I still want to pursue a CCIE. I would really like to dig deeper into BGP with this new exam. I don't have a test date just yet, but I'm hoping maybe the next, within the next year, that I would be able to study these exam topics and test by mid next year, hopefully.
Thanks. I'm also working on some Palo Alto stuff, so learning two things at once.
Yeah, yeah.
Who's next?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, my name is Carl. I'm from Ethiopia, Africa. And you can call me Joseph. The pronunciation of my name is difficult for you guys. Currently, I am studying for the new topics of the exam, like the automation part, just like that. And last year before the version of the CCI changed, I have taken the written one and I didn't pass normally, but I have studied a lot of topics of the CCI before the version change. And I take one of the camp of NABRIK last year. So I am good in the routing and switching stuff. I need some revision on it. So for mind refreshing, I was just considering to take the devinitas associate in the coming two months. And rapidly I'll change to the C-CMP exam directly. I plan just like that.
Okay, I guess I can go. My name is Rodney. I'm this side of Austin, Texas at the current moment. I currently do have my C-CMP route switch, but I'm going for my CCIE. So just to start going back, part of my idea is to take several of the C-CMP tests, C-CMP Enterprise. So I want to be starting with the Encore test just so I can make sure I know all of the topics for my CCIE. Because my company is paying for my tests right now. So I've been staying pretty focused. I've gone through the official cert guide for Encore once, but I want to try to go through it one more time. It's just it's kind of busy right now with work. So it's kind of hard and I have my kid. So that's pretty much my focus. The only topic that I'm kind of struggling on is the automation. I got to work a little bit harder at that part, but I feel pretty good so far.
Can you hear me? Hi, my name is Andre. I live in Seattle. Have my CCNA and I tried to go for the route switch last year. Only ended up passing switch. Went through all the topics for both route switch and troubleshooting. Probably plan on taking the exam maybe the beginning of the new year unless I run into some money or something. I guess the week topics would be multicast, wireless. I'd be interested in teaching any of the layer two or layer three route switch stuff since that time we went over that quite a bit. But anything else probably need to work on a lot. And that's it.
Awesome. Is that everyone?
I believe I'm the last, yes. Well, my name is Juan. I'm from Guadalajara, Mexico. On Twitter, I'm at Rout. I passed my C-CMP last year. But right now, I would like to have to study again on the Encore and the C-CMP topics. I'm planning to get my CCIE, not this year, because if you rush this path, you're not going to enjoy it. And maybe you will drive some crazy. But right now, I'm a little bit confused to take a score or Encore. So I will maybe study both.
Okay. Cool. So I heard a common theme with work and kids and automation, which is also something that I struggle with. I did try to play around with Python a little bit last year, but it just fell to the wayside because there's work and ACI and all these wonderful other things to learn. So it sounds like we're all on the same page. So what I'm going to try to do is reach out to some people on Twitter to see. It sounds like automation was the one that I heard the most followed by BGP. So I'm going to try to find some people to donate an hour of their time to go over some automation topics and answer some questions for us. But I think a good place to start would be for today, outside of just our introductions, would also just be some study tips. So is anybody using any video courses outside of the official cert guide or any other books or video courses?
The only course I've been using so far is CBT Nuggets. I'm looking to I U E as well, but just CBT so far.
Yeah, I have CBT as well. Kevin Wallace is another good one that I got my CCNA under or through with his help. So he teaches, I think, at a really good pace and explains really basic, really hard topics in a very basic way.
Awesome. Yes, I started out with I U E. But it just kind of seemed like they just recycled the content and didn't really produce anything new. So I have moved on to using CBT Nuggets. I have seen some of Kevin Wallace's stuff. I haven't purchased any of it, but I agree, he does do a great job of breaking things down to their simpler, easier to digest terms. So I'm going to just share my study plan so everyone just can see what I'm following. And feel free to jump in and share what you're doing as well. Just so this hour is valuable outside of just level setting where we all are. Cool?
Cool.
Excellent, okay.
So I see a couple of people just joined. So just to let you know what you missed, so we just kind of went around and introduced ourselves, stated where we are in our journey with studying for the C-CMP and some topics that we'd be interested in getting a little bit more guidance on. The top two were automation and BGP. So if you just want to quickly introduce yourself and state those same things before I share how I'm studying, feel free.
For the study materials, for the routing and switching, I U E, Brian Magan old video is a good material, I think. And the official cert guide, the one, the new official cert guide, I found it a good material. But if anybody can get access for the Brian Magan video, it is more video. Maybe sometimes it will be out of the exam topic. But for routing and switching, it's a good video, I think. I found that's very useful.
Great. So a few weeks ago, I posted a video. I use Asana to study now, just because I found that my studying the book cover to cover wasn't really working for me. It wasn't keeping me engaged. I think that once you've actually been doing the work for a while, it better suit you to follow the exam topics, which was very helpful for me. So what I did was, and I'll make this a template. So if anybody's interested in using Asana, it's 100% free just for the basic tracking functionality. Or if you just want a spreadsheet with information, I'll make that available as well now that I know how to. So basically, what I did was I compiled a bunch of resource links to start with. So the Cisco learning courses, which I was able to purchase with some Cisco learning credits. I made a task to actually schedule my exam, which I haven't done yet. I linked the Learning Network forums where a lot of people share information, Cisco DevNet to use. So I don't have a full physical lab. I've used GNS3 somewhat. I played around with Viral. I haven't really committed to anything yet as far as getting it stood up on my own machine. But Cisco DevNet does offer the Cisco Modeling Labs. You have to schedule it in advance, but I liked it so far. And when I set this up, I was also demoing Cloud My Lab. And what that is, this is a website. You pay a subscription fee based on the application you're using, either GNS3, EV, ENG, or the Cisco Modeling Labs. A monthly subscription. GNS3 is about $30. Basically, they provide you a pod similar. If anyone's taken Cisco training, when they do the labs, you get like a VM and you can go in and play with the different equipment. So it's very similar to that. The GNS3 subscription was $30. I have since canceled it because I feel like the Cisco Modeling Labs are sufficient on DevNet. I haven't had too much issue with getting scheduled time in. I also use that for work when I'm trying to work through something or I'm learning something for work. So that's been really beneficial for me. And then lastly, I started taking, when I started a new chapter, making a quizlet of the do I know this already questions. So what I do is I make the quizlet. I take the test in the book on paper, see where I am. And then I make the quizlet. And then I go through the chapter and then do the quizlet again. So I'm kind of testing myself after every chapter to kind of pace where I am. And then from there, I copied the blueprint over and broke it down into a task and subtask. And then I actually, oops, I did not want to test it. It disappears. And then I actually went in using the official certification guide and tied the chapters to this. Now, I created this before the CBT Nuggets videos were out. So the videos aren't linked in here, but I had started linking the I U E videos, which I'm not using anymore, tied to these topics. So this is topic 1.1 and that ties back to chapter 22 and 15, which I have completed and I have notes for. And yeah, just so on like that. I used to just kind of Xerox the page that's in the front of the official cert guide with the exam topics and just check them off. But I'm trying to get away from having so much paper outside of my notes. So this has been really helpful for me. There are a couple of other apps like Notion and Trello, which you're probably familiar with, that also have iPhone and Android apps if you're interested in that. And I think this will import into all of those because it just exports as a spreadsheet, which you can just import wherever. So yeah, this has been really helpful for me just outside of just staying on track with what I'm studying and when I'm not distracted by what I'm learning for work. That's all I have on that. Did you guys like handwrite your notes or?
Well, I do all of my notes in OneNote. So everything has been in OneNote for me. I've been using that way for years.
I've been using Evernote. I've been using Evernote for a while. And I'm a big book writer, well, writer in my book and highlighter. So between writing in my book or using the exam topics, writing on those pages and making sure that I understand each topic line by line, I might put little notes around there. So I write little crib sheet notes, basically, and then try and compile it in my Evernote and go through that. Yeah, I use Evernote and then I also use flashcards. So like if I'm out somewhere, I can easily take those out and kind of run through some topics or whatever.
Yeah, I'm big into highlighting and writing my notes.
Yeah, I'm using the old school strategy, just putting things on my notebook and highlighting, just like that. But these days, I start using Notion and Evernote also. But I would like if you guys recommend to me, if there is a good flashcard app, Android app, if you find this full up. I try some apps, but it's not satisfying me.
Yeah, quizlet is a good. There are mobile apps really good with flashcards. I use it to do quizzes, but there is a flashcard option you can do as well. Haven't tried it. I'm not super big into flashcards. I did it with my CCNA when I was just trying to get commands down. So I might revisit it in that sense. But I haven't even gotten to any of the material where that would even be relevant yet. So we'll see. So I would just write the command on one side and then what it accomplished on the other. And that really helped me with my CCNA when I was first starting. Cool. So does anyone have any questions or is this going to be a short session?
So what time frame are you guys looking to take your test? I'm trying to shoot within the next two to three weeks for Encore.
So for me, I'm looking more towards the end of the summer, just taking it into account. We're working on ACI deployment at work. So that's kind of eaten up some of my study time, just learning that technology.
Got it. Because for me, I don't get a chance to study Cisco much. We are Juniper shop for the most part. So I do, only thing we have Cisco later are firewalls, but that's about it, so.
Yeah, same here. I'm looking towards like end of the summer. Currently working on like a remote deployment. And it's like a lot of fiber optic stuff. So and then a mixed vendor, so it's a little bit of Juniper and Cisco. But since we've been working from home, I have more time to study up on C-CMP.
All right. So any more questions or comments?
I have a question. How are you guys balancing studying two different vendors? So like this is Chris, by the way. I had mentioned that my job is moving away from Cisco and then moving to Palo Alto at the edge. But I still want to accomplish a C-CMP, C-CIE. So how do you guys alternate between the two?
Well, for me, I could switch between Juniper and Cisco. Basically, the networking concepts are the same. Juniper, the syntax is pretty different, but the principle is the same. So when I'm working on Juniper, it's just all about learning the syntax, the looking for. So it's not that big of a difference for me. I could look at Cisco stuff and perfect the small details, but have enough information to know that in Juniper, okay, I have to do a couple of small things different as far as the syntax. But I don't really have to go study Juniper the way you would Cisco. There are some things you've got to look at. But if you learn the foundation, and I'm using Cisco for my foundation, it doesn't really matter what vendor I go to. It's all going to be the same for the most part. Most vendors have the same context in a way for like routers and switches. Most of them copy Cisco. Except for Juniper, Juniper's contest is way different. So that's how I look at it. It's just learning the basics, which I'm using Cisco for that. But then I could take that for any vendor and apply it. Just have to Google like the syntax for something. That's pretty much it.
Okay.
So for me, I really try to just set time aside to review whatever it is that I'm preparing to do at work. So for Palo Alto example, for example, I'm not big into firewall. I know how to do some things, but I'm definitely not a firewall person. So what I did was, you know, when we purchased Palo Alto, I took some time to just do some like introductory courses, just to kind of familiarize myself with it. I also looked at some intro ASA courses. Because like what was mentioned, Cisco is really the base. So I find that it's easy if I'm thinking like, well, Cisco does it like this. Palo's doing it the same way, but it's a different syntax. So they're like throwing their own spin on it. And then it really helps to just learn. Basically, they're saying the same thing, but like a different language. And for my job, we're a big agile environment. So all of our work is planned in sprints. So that really helps me if I know like, okay, for the Palo Alto, you know, we're putting the AWS, the AWS tunnels on the Palo Alto next week. So I know that sometimes between this week and next Wednesday, I need to sit down and just go through, look at the configuration on the ASA, watch some videos on how it's done on Palo Alto, you know, cross-reference, and then just prepare myself for that. So I really try to take it, do a general overview and then just take it task by task with what I'm learning. Doing something very similar with ACI. ACI is spaghetti, a dish of spaghetti. But it's coming together for me. But I just try to take it piece by piece.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question. Yeah, you can call me Joseph. That's easy for you. So you guys get the chance to deploy the new Cisco platforms like the exam topic, the automation part, says the D-N-S enters a moderation. And this is stuff, so you guys get the chance to deploy and to make a hundred job on these things because I didn't, I can't get the chance to deploy this materials in my company. So what's your view on these things?
I haven't personally had a chance to pull a lot of the new stuff just because we made the decision to go away from Cisco to Juniper based off of the cost per performance. So but I have, I do have a lot of friends that have the DoD Center that are working on a lot of those products. I came from the Air Force prior, so I got the, and Air Force was pretty big on Cisco. So some of those technologies, we were looking to as I was leaving. So but not too foreign to you for me.
My company, they, with everybody working from home, it's a big part of it as a call center. So they send mostly everybody home with Marocchis. And I've been digging into that a little bit. On CBT Nuggets, one of the guys, Knox, Knox Hutchinson, has a whole course on Marocchi. So I've been diving into that a bit. And it kind of helps with the SD access concept, which basically that's what it is, is just a different flavor of it. So that's been over me. And I just got a little bit of training today on how to add a Marocchi to the network that a user would do their Marocchi and it would be a network under the organization. So it's pretty cool stuff as you dig more into it.
So are you guys using Marocchi to extend your network to like the user's home base?
Under the call center, they did, when, you know, COVID-19 hit, um, it was just one big call center, so they had to disperse everybody home. So they're plugging in, they're using thin clients with a Cisco Citrix platform. So they have the thin client and their, um, desk phones, which is a via. And they plug both devices into the Marquis to get them through their ISP onto the UVC network, the company network. So.
So it's Marquis and my organization. But we haven't had any conversations about doing anything like that.
Yeah. Yeah, the dashboard is pretty intuitive, yeah.
The, uh, so part of the, the network I work on is, uh, like standing up new, um, data centers and connecting them to the existing network and then making sure they also have connectivity to, uh, the service provider side. And we have a few like, uh, generic, um, Cisco boxes. And then we get a bunch of, um, boxes that they work on specifically for our company. So like the CCP is like good knowledge to have, but like once I leave my company, I probably wouldn't see those type of, uh, Cisco flowers or anything.
Uh, any other questions?
I did, so have you had a chance to look at the CBT Nugget course yet?
Um, I started the first few videos, I haven't dived, gotten through a lot of them yet, though.
Okay, so are you, are you gonna use it, um, along with the, uh, one from the Cisco Learning Network?
Yeah, um, I find that CBT Nuggets does a good job in breaking down the Cisco language. Um, Cisco stuff as you say, in Cisco language, um, which doesn't always translate well for my brain, so.
Right.
I, I like that it at least has like two different sources of information that I can reference. If I'm not really understanding it on the Cisco side, I can, you know, reference the CBT Nugget.
Okay.
And you guys use the materials, any recommendation of books you have used, uh, rather than the video? And the, there is a, so Charlotte today, it is a good book, I think. If you use, there is any additional books you use.
Yeah, I've just been using the, um, official certification guide, I haven't looked at any of the other stuff. That was kind of the first available, so that's what I went for. Is anybody else using any other, any other book?
I think that's the only book that's out right now for this specific exam.
Yeah, if Amazon doesn't have it, I don't think any of the books exist, because I just did a search the other day. And I found a lot of CCNA stuff, but not a lot of CCP, no, nothing other than the official cert guide on the CCP Encore.
Right.
Yeah. Cool, um. So I'm gonna go ahead and try to get someone on for automation, thinking Nick Russo, if he has some time. He's really big into automation. Has anybody looked at any of the, the DevNet Associate stuff?
No.
I'm gonna try to tackle that maybe later, or I love to get DevNet Associate, but I wanna focus on this encore first and knocking that out.
Yeah, my biggest thing with DevNet is just the use case at work. We kind of had a conversation today about automating ACI, but everyone needs to get comfortable with ACI before we start automating things. So hopefully, I've been trying to like do some like scripts just in, in the lab environment to see how that works. But I, I just don't really have a use case for it. So for me, it's kind of like, you know, I'll learn it to pass the test, but I'm not using it.
Yeah, so I just don't, for the DevNet Associate, right now, I just cannot see a good use case for it just because it's like, there's enough automation on like encore that I don't see even the marketability of DevNet Associate. I've seen his online from, uh, from a few other people. And even looking up, uh, at who's looking for that type of certification, I just don't see the use case for it right now. Uh, maybe later, but I just don't think it's ever gonna take off. I can't see the uses of it, to be honest with.
For the DevNet Associate exam, just, I just try to see the, Cisco have the fundamental course. They have fundamental course, three months, six months, and one month's plan. And I just got registered for the three months plan last weekend, I just to see visit on the exam topic, and also Nick Chris will have a good DevNext Associate course in the Pler side. But the real difficult part for me is, in my company, there is no use case for the automation part. And also there is no use case for the new Cisco platforms like the DNS centers, the Marquis, the ACI, just like that. So I just start Googling and looking at DevNet sandbox. They have a good practice material for the automation there, for sandbox. If anybody wants to try Python script, uh, they are free sandbox, so. I'm just doing some parts, I'm on the starting part. So I'm gonna tackle the DevNet Associate first before I go to the CCP. So the automation part, it will be easy for me after that, I think.
So, um, one question I have, what concentration exam is everyone interested in? So this is the core. Uh, is anybody interested in any of the other concentration exams outside of like the advanced routing services?
I'm not trying, you know, the course after the concentration, after the co-exam, I'm not trying to, you know, to the automation part course.
I was thinking that data center.
Nice. Yeah, I was looking at that, um. There's a lot of UCS stuff on it, and I don't dabble in UCS, but I'm kind of weighing, do I really wanna go down that route or just do the specialty exam data center? I don't know yet.
Yeah, I guess that's kind of where it's hard to pick, because you kind of have to compare it to what your company is doing and, and what they have. Because like you said, UCS, we don't have anything UCS. And that's just because the network team is real siloed, and the network team is separate from the systems team. So we really don't touch a lot of the system stuff. So, um, if for, for some reason the data center track doesn't kind of work out, um, then I would probably end up just going with the advanced, uh, routing services.
Anybody interested in, uh, any of the design certifications?
I was toying with the idea of getting the CCDA before this whole switch over. I didn't go for it, but I was learning it. So it, it's in the back of my mind. I like, I just graduated and we had to do our capstone, and we had to design our network and everything. So I did, I did like that part, so it is very possible I might go that way, there is an interest there.
Yeah, I'm for sure looking at, um, after advanced routing services, after I'm taking a break, um, doing the designing enterprise networks. Does anybody else have anything they want to share before we conclude today's call? Alright. Take that silence as a no, okay. So I will send out a recap as well as the link to the recording of this. Um, and then next week, we will look at automation. And I'll see if I can find someone in our wonderful Twitter community who will be willing to just donate thirty minutes to an hour of their time to go over some concepts or just answer some questions. So does any, just to keep everyone accountable.
Sorry, one, 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 one final question. Anybody use a new Cisco viral thing, I think CML, CML? Is anybody experienced in this challenge, right?
Oh, well, I haven't had a chance yet, uh, I've been focusing on EVG, but I have been looking at some of David Bumble's, uh, videos on YouTube. Uh, he is pretty much going through, uh, CML, a lot, uh, all the features and how to set it up. So, uh, I want to give that a try compared to EVG. Uh, David Bumble, if you wanna get a very good recap of CML, uh, his, uh, Bumble's B-O-M-B-A-L. And just look up David Bumble on YouTube, and he has a lot of good stuff, so.
Yeah, I know, I know, yeah, I know Bumble, David Bumble.
Um, Kevin Wallace is, uh, he tried a CML, um, I don't know, a snippet of it to do a OSPF troubleshooting. And it was basically a lab, a very basic lab, a handful of routers and some switches. And you was, just had to find like three or four things that was wrong of why the routers couldn't speak OSPF to each other. And he did that in CML, and I went through his video, which showed you how to do the free version and, you know, everything. And I was able to pull his, his lab into the web version of CML and actually did it and, you know, resolved it. So I thought it was kind of cool, I gave him a comment and, um, on it. So it, that was a, a small introduction to CML, so get my feet wet with that. I liked it, it's just, it does so much, right? So you're just trying to learn it bit by bit and not through a water hose.
Alright, um, so I'll send this out. Does everyone wanna commit to, you know, one goal related to this? Maybe it's completing a chapter by next, next week.
Oh, my goal is to get through all of the automation videos for CBT Nuggets.
My goal would be to, uh, work through the first, um, exam domain on the exam topics. Uh, the, you know, the Cisco official exam topics, that's kind of usually what I work, work through. It's just a little more easier and, and it's easier to look at, um, compared to just going through the book and trying to grasp everything, whereas the exam topics kind of just break it down for you, make it a little more simpler to, to look at and learn.
Anyone else?
My goal is to stop myself from highlighting every line on the exam topics, that's, that's me. I've been slowly but surely making my way down, but in all seriousness, I've been really hitting the, uh, the routing, the E, E, EIGRP OSPF, and I just broke into BGP last night, so, in the CBT Nugget series. So to just keep going through that, and I, I jumped from book, from book to video. So when the video gets boring, I'll jump to the book, and then when the book gets boring, I jump to the video and sometimes compare it. And it kind of, it helps sometimes because it reinforces the same topic, either whether I read it in the book or whether it's Keith or Jeremy, um, doing that particular topic, I like their style, so. And they're not boring, they're very animated, they're very energetic, and that, that's, that works well for me. So when the book gets dry, I'll hop to them, and then sometimes like, oh, so that's what, you know, the authors are talking about in the book and go from there. So just keep hammering away at it is my, my goal.
Yeah, how do you guys handle balancing the reading with video?
My part, I love to start reading from the book before I start watching the video. I wanted to get a little bit foundation from the books. Sometimes the video become into the point and they're short things, short points. And I don't get the chance to see the CBT Nugget video, but I, I in the video have some longer videos. But my strategy is to get something from the book, then went to the video for the second day. Then come back and doing the labs, just like that.
Uh, for me, uh, doing video first helps a lot, because when I start reading, the book is kind of dry. And sometimes I get bored and I can't, you know, continue reading the book. So I go back to the videos and do at least, you know, uh, some video and then come back to the book, and that helps for me.
Yeah, I try to, um, so what I've been doing, uh, this go around, usually I'll read the chapter and then watch the corresponding videos. Um, but I, I've tried to take a more, the same approach you guys are, which is, you know, read for a little bit and then watch the video and then follow back up. Um, I do get more reading done during the day, um, at work. I try to pre-coronavirus, um, I would have my book with me and just, you know, take ten minutes here and there, read a little bit, highlight, and then go back, go back to work.
Yeah, digest, digesting in smaller tidbits kind of helps, and then I'll just meditate on it. I'll sit down and just draw my mind map, if you will, and try and connect the dots. And my wife, she's been a sounding board, and she just looks at me and I'm, I'll explain it, she'll look at me like a deer in headlights. But I know that I'm explaining it, I'm not stumbling, I feel like I have a grasp of it, so that, that helps too, when I go over the material, whether it's the book or the.
What kind of mind mapping software do you guys use? Do you have any recommendation?
Mostly I use Xmind. It's been a long time, I started using Xmind, and I don't like shifting from one software to another. It gives me boring to adapt the new software, so I just used it, I think, starting from two years before or something. I don't know, I use Xmind.
Yeah, I'm new to mind mapping, um, I just tried it with, um, the Enterprise Network Architecture Chapter. And, um, I just kind of did it on paper. Um, I try to start it, you know, paper first, and then if I see the value in it, then I'll find some, play around with some software. Um, so I did a, a, a paper mind map, and then I translated it into MindNode, which is, I'm not sure if they have a, a Android client, um, but I do know they have Windows and Mac. Um, and that's, that's really helped me just visually, just visually at a glance, break down the material. So I'm, I'm liking it so far. Okay, um, did anybody else wanna set a goal for next week?
For next week.
For next week, currently I'm using the even G platform, but I just wanna try to try the new C M L Cisco simulator. Now put that one on my Mac and I'm not trying some to break down the exam topics of the system. I didn't get time to concentrate on this, but I'll break down, this is my time.
I'll be working on uh multicast-ing. That's something new to me and I'm reading the book and hopefully I'll be done.
Um, I go, so for me, I'm, my goal is to finish the uh first domain of the exam topic, which is architecture. Um. And anyone else have any, wanna share a goal? It's okay if you don't, too.
So do you guys uh follow just the book or do you follow the uh exam topics when you do reading? Because I'm, I'm just reading the book just from page one, I'm going, you know, and, and the multicast-ing chapter right now, but the, it doesn't mirror, you know, the exam topic, the, the book. So do you guys follow just the exam topic and then pick a chapter from the book? Or do you do just uh, do you just go chapter by chapter, you know, the, reading the book?
I am, I started out going chapter by chapter, but I couldn't stay engaged with it. Um, so then uh it suggested to just follow the exam topics and I kept up with it a little bit more. Also, I find that most of the video courses are outlined according to the exam topic. So it's a lot easier to just, you know, cross-reference the chapter you're reading with the corresponding video. Um, so this, this is my first time studying like this and I, I really like it so far.
I think that's why maybe what I need to do, because just read the book, you know, going from chapter one, whatever, that's kind of sometimes gets boring.
Yeah, I've, I've been following the exam topics also. Um, I just find it easier for me to kind of go back and touch upon some areas that um I might not fully grasp. And then I can highlight the sections off the exam topics that I think I've kind of mastered.
All right, so there's seven minutes left, are there any last questions, comments, any goals? Before we conclude for this week?
Do you guys just start reading for the automation or side by side? Not regarding to for the exam, but do you start reading just Python data formats or anything about the new automation?
I broke off and like Daria said earlier, I, I can't read the straight line. Sometimes I just need to charge my mind with a different topic. And um, I started jumping into automation and I'm, again, the mind mapping, you know, really trying to understand when they say data formats, what they're referring to. So what the AML and JSON and all of that, and actually realizing, okay, when they say a certain term, what they're referring to. Um, and just keep watching the video and referring to the book. And sometimes I just do a Google search and see what some other people have out there, just to get a fresh take. Because it's that one person that explains it in such a way that the lights come on, where I don't watch, you know, X Y Z person's video thirty times and it just wasn't making a dent. So I've come across things like that that's helped. And the DevNet, you know, getting into that a little bit, um, which has always been a daunting thing for me, is it's starting to open up more, especially since they made all these changes with Viral two, which is the C M L.
Yeah, I kind of, I started looking at it last year, um, got overwhelmed, took a break. Um, I've recently been revisiting it more in terms of like ACI and what that looks like there. So. Um, yeah, just taking it piece by piece, I'm, I'm not, programming has never been um strong suit for me. Even, you know, back in college when I had programming classes, it wasn't, it just didn't click. So really just taking it piece by piece, um, trying to find, you know, multiple resources to explain it. Um, and, and go from there.
So, anybody start reading Python?
I haven't had to use it, um, just as far as like coding, mostly been doing um batch, batch scripting and uh some like Linux scripts. Uh, planning on starting to probably get serious about Python towards a new year, probably.
Same. All right, um, so we have four minutes, so, um, I'll just do a quick recap. Um, so today we just talked about um the purpose of the study group and introduce ourselves, level set where we are in our studying journey, when we would like to take the exam and topics that um most interest us to dive a little bit deeper in. The top two were automation um and B G P. Um, we set goals for what we wanna have accomplished by next week. And, you know, shared a little bit about our work and where we're seeing the technology being used. Um, so I will send out this recording once it's ready, along with a short written recap. And we will meet uh next week at seven. And the tentative topic will be automation. Um, assuming there is, there is availability for uh one of the three people that I'm thinking of to be available to just be on hand to answer questions. Um, and we'll go from there. And I'll have the invite for next week, the invite me agenda out by next Monday. Um.
Awesome.
Sounds good.
Uh, thanks everyone.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you.